So before the meeting, we're gonna swear in Commissioner Kroll for his new term, reappointed. Henry, you wanna?
Right here.
So I state your name.
I, Henry Kroll.
You solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Saldovia.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Saldovia.
State of Alaska.
The state of Alaska.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And then I will faithfully, faithfully and honestly.
Perform the duties of the Office of Planning Commissioner.
Perform the duties of the Office of Planning Commissioner.
Of the city of Saldovia.
Of the city of Saldovia.
Allison. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. I did, I emailed you notes and we can do it over Zoom.
Okay.
If you'd like, then you can sign it when you get back.
Sure.
Okay. Do you have it in front of you or would you like me to read it?
Nope, I've got it. So you just want me to read it out loud?
Yep.
Okay. I, Allison Ryan, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the laws and ordinances of the city of Saldovia, state of Alaska, and that I will faithfully and honestly perform the duties of the Office of Planning Commission of the city of Saldovia. I do so affirm. Uh, my name, Allison Ryan. Right, that's it?
That's it.
Okay.
Allison, where are you skiing?
Uh, forty-nine degrees north, near Spokane.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It was a really nice day today. Yesterday was foggy. It was kinda weird.
All right, with those members sworn back in, we can call them into order when you're ready, Chair Sweet.
Okay, um, so, um, I will call the, uh, Saldovia Planning Commission, uh, meeting to order on Wednesday, March 5th. Then it's about six oh eight, um, PM. And then, uh, if the clerk could call the roll.
Commissioner Sweet.
Here.
Commissioner Kroll. Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
And Commissioner Forsberg.
Here.
We have four members present.
Thank you. And then, um, I'd like to, um, ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to prove it.
Ann, could I have a second?
I have a second, Deb.
Thank you. And if the clerk could take the roll.
Uh, Commissioner Sweet.
Yes.
Commissioner Kroll. Commissioner Ryan.
Yes.
And Commissioner Forsberg.
Yes.
We have four yeas.
Thank you. And then moving on to item D, approval of minutes. And if I could have a motion to that effect.
Move to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Kroll. Ann, could I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Forsberg. And if the, um, clerk could call the roll.
Commissioner Sweet.
Yes.
Commissioner Kroll. Commissioner Ryan.
Yes.
And Commissioner Forsberg.
Yes.
We have four yeas.
Thank you. And are there any public comments regarding items not on the agenda?
I do not believe so.
Okay. And there, um, there are, there are none, so we'll, um, move on to the next item, uh, public hearings, prior notice, uh, there are none. Uh, consideration of site plans, um.
We have none.
Okay. And then our commission business, uh, the first one is annual appointment of chair and vice chair of the commission. I guess.
Yeah, and we, um, we did this in twenty twenty-three, and last year we kind of skipped it because we were looking for a new member and we had the Commercial Business District Subcommittee going on. And at this time, we do usually do this at the beginning of the calendar year.
Um, so. Um, is, does anybody wish to, uh, be the chair or, because that's, is that, that's what we want to ask right now, is if anyone wants to be the chair or the vice chair? Um, Allison, are you willing to continue?
Yes, yes, I can do vice chair, but I, I just realized I've, I opened up all the meeting, all the documents I opened up were for February nineteenth. I don't know. I guess I have to go back to the website and make sure I get the right set. But yeah, I will do vice chair.
Okay, so we have a candidate for vice chair. Um. Um, if, if no one else wants to be chair, I'm happy to continue in that role, so. Is that? So, um. Um, Madam Clerk, we now have a slate of officers, so, um, should, do we just?
So if you just look for a motion to appoint.
The slate of officers.
Yeah, two of one, two points, yourself as chair.
And, and Commissioner Ryan as vice chair.
So.
Sorry, would anybody like to offer a motion?
Would, would anybody like to offer a motion to that effect?
Yes, I'd, I'd like to get motion.
And could I have a second?
I have a second, Deb.
And if the clerk could call the roll.
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sweet.
Yes.
Commissioner Kroll. Commissioner Ryan.
Yes.
And Commissioner Forsberg.
Yes.
We have four yeas.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. It's my honor to do that. Um, then the, um, so we're going, uh, to the next item, which is ordinance twenty-five, uh, dash XX, um, an ordinance, um, of the city council of the city of Saldovia, amending the chapters that are, um, called out there in the agenda eighteen twenty, um, eighteen twenty-four, and repealing and reenacting, uh, chapter eighteen seventy, and I also, I, I missed eighteen fifty-two, so, um, basically that's the work of the subcommittee and we're working on the final, um, review of the ordinance changes and, uh, the staff will take us through the, uh, remaining changes and then we'll just check in to make sure that, uh, the commission or the public have any, um, comments, um, before we, um, once we kind of clarify everything, if, if the commissioners feel that we're ready, then we will, uh, move to, um, send it over to the city council. So that's kind of where we, where we are at, at this moment, so we will turn it over to the staff.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So this draft ordinance begins on page ten of the packet. And it is the same as last time. I updated the memo on page eight and nine, um, and I updated the draft based on the feedback that was received at the last meeting, but everything else remains the same. All the changes in here, um, the new changes are highlighted, the, the highlights from the last changes were removed because they were accepted and they're in here. So now, um, just addressing the newly highlighted, uh, items with the exception of the whereas's. Um, Clerk Diamond was, updated those so that they, um, are more concurrent with what we're doing now. Yes, but page eleven, you'll see the first highlight, that was the suggestion to have a reference at the beginning of the definitions to refer back to land use table for, uh, those, um, specific land use types. Um, and then you'll see later before the land use table that there's a reference, uh, back to the definitions. If you turn to the next, um, couple pages here and on page thirteen, I don't know why that space ended up in there, but under Business General, uh, that definition was in there, it was just as a, a business office, uh, but that was changed and is now a business professional office and it's specific to the office of a member of recognized profession, maintained for the conduct, conduct of that profession, so thinking like a vet's office, a tax office, um, some kind of an offices providing a service directly as a profession, um, and that being permitted in Business, uh, General or as a, as a land use under Business General, um, which is a permitted purpose in the Commercial Business District. And then number fifteen underneath Business Specific Office, um, was a definition that was already in there, so just putting that back in, um, as office space directly retaining to the retail or service business use of the building, which is, um, you know, that's not the direct profession or business, but rather an, an ancillary use or an incidental use to a, to a different business. Um, and that is a secondary use under the Commercial Business District, uh, which is what, which is what it was previously. So then if you change, change to page twenty, um, you'll also see the office was put back in there. Um, and this was, so this was, it just, we're just not taking it out, those, those definitions are staying in there, they're staying the way they are. That's a room, a group of rooms used for conducting the affairs of a business professional service industry or government. Uh, so just kind of a generalized definition that was already in there and, um, figured if we're, we're keeping one, we should keep them all and then, um, we can move through and see how that works, um, in the future. And then if you turn to page twenty-six, we, twenty-five and twenty-six is that, uh, Central Business District or Commercial Business being renamed as Central Business with Purpose, Permitted Use, and incidental secondary use updated, as well as putting language back in, um, that was removed from ordinance twenty-one oh three, um, for all three sections. Uh, and then, uh, updating, so you'll see that, that, uh, purpose statement was updated, sorry, I should have highlighted that, but I did not. Um, so that was a consensus from the actions at the last meeting. And then under eighteen fifty-two zero two five, incidental secondary uses, uh, we could use some feedback, um, went back and forth on, you know, what that looks like, and I think the desire really is just to have, um, knowledge and awareness, um, of, of building use to ensure that, uh, it's appropriate for, uh, a primary use versus an incident, incidental use. So updating that language, um, from where it was, uh, prohibited to utilize a space for, uh, incidental use for more than forty-nine percent of the building, uh, instead of making it an administrative permit, which was, um, one of the suggestions from the last meeting. And I did, uh, just put it in there so it's kind of open at this point, um, and flexible, uh, that an administrative permit or approval is required for incidental secondary uses that exceed fifty percent of the building use. And that can be done through, um, a building permit or a business license or, you know, discussion with the applicant and working through what that looks like. Um. Discouraging, uh, an over, overarching use of an incidental, you, you know, having, I think, having this language in here helps discourage or helps at least, um, maybe discourages isn't the right word, helps encourage and provide awareness that, you know, an incidental really shouldn't be more than your building. Um, however, uh, there, there are circumstances that would, uh, deem that necessary and I don't, I don't know that the city is in opposition to any of that, just having that conversation. So, uh, definitely would like feedback on that, uh, if that language meets the purpose and the intent. And then the rest of the changes are on page thirty-two and thirty-three, where that Business General, again, is an, an administrative permit, uh, for the public district, as well as manufacturing, fabricating, assembly, an administrative permit, and so same thing, if you have a lease with the city, a vending license, um, you know, or application, whatever process that, that, um, that administrative approval is happening in order for those functions to happen in that district. And then, uh, offices, business, as, was put back in, um, and it's offices slash Business Specific Office. So those, uh, were the updates from the last discussion, uh, and everything else, um, that, oh, I should have said also that that business definition um, was changed so that it was the one that was agreed upon, um, the longer one, so that changed and then the purpose statement changed, um, and then, and then those other additions, so.
So, um, uh, I would just like to ask the clerk about, uh, relaxing, I forget what the term is, just to relax the rules.
Then the rules.
Then the rules, uh, so that, uh, the public can participate in any feedback that we have.
Thank you. This is Ecola. The only thing I noticed right off is we had talked about, um, continuing the land uses, the RG, RSM, the different categories at the top throughout, so you wouldn't have to reference back as you're scrolling on the internet.
So it's, we had, because we had, I think that, um, that might have been, um, something just the way I had written stuff down, because we had the types that we removed because they were confusing, you know, on the left-hand side, but it wasn't meant to take off the, the, um, the letters above the columns, so it just, when it's up, when it's prepared for the, um, trip, transmittal to the city council, if those could just be, um, put back into the.
Uh, yes, excellent feedback, thank you for that. Uh, it probably will not be put back into the ordinance, because what will happen is when it translates to the actual code book, it'll be different than how it is in ordinance form, so having, um, the, the two and a half pages here, um, and, uh, uh, we can discuss this further with Clerk Diamond, but wherever we put it in here to meet the pages is not, if they're, whatever they're, they're passing is not gonna be how it looks in the book according to headers, but when it goes into the book.
Okay.
The headers will be there and online, the headers will be there, it's just not in the ordinance, because it's, it depends on which format we're using, um, and when it makes it into the, to the final codebook.
And that will happen after the city council. Any, any other, any other comments, um, from the commissioners?
Yes, Allison, here, um, you wanted, the feedback for the incidental use, that sounds like a good way to proceed.
Thank you, Commissioner, um, Ryan. Any other comments from the commissioners? So at, at this point, um, uh, then I, I will take, uh, a motion to, um, transmit the, um, proposed ordinance changes to the city council.
Make a motion for that, excuse me.
Thank you, Commissioner Forsberg, and, uh, a second.
I can second that, this is Allison.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan, and then if the clerk could, um, take the roll.
Commissioner Sweet.
Yes.
Commissioner Kroll.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ryan.
Yes.
And Commissioner Forsberg.
Yeah.
We have four yeas.
So, um, congratulations to everybody, um, thank you so much for all your time and effort and thought on this, it's been a journey and, um, just so, so much appreciate the, uh, the clerks and the city manager and the, and the subcommittees and the commissioners. Um, just a lot of work has gone into this and I believe that it will be something that will help the public understand what needs, you know, what needs to be done and, you know, and, you know, going into the future, we'll do continuous improvement, but hopefully this is something that will be helpful to, to our community, so thank you again. Um, the next item is, um, the, um, uh, ordinance, uh, this is, um, under commission business, item two, and it's regarding the ordinance, um, uh, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry, for item I, staff reports, and so this is, um, so I will turn that over to Seth.
All right, that, that's one, so, um, after the previous planning commission meeting where the, um, resolution did not pass to deny the rezoning application on advice of legal counsel, we sent that back to the city council in the form of an action memorandum twenty-five dash oh nine, um, where they did vote four to two to officially deny the rezoning application and send formal notice, so the applicants were notified of that denial by email and a certified letter on February twenty-sixth, and they have thirty days from the date of that lever to appeal that action or determination. So at this point, that matter is off of the planning commissions.
Thank you.
If anybody has any questions on that. Sitting there, would you, do you have anything to add?
And then, so, guess onto the building permits.
So we are starting to get building permits for this current season, um, we just completed one today and we have one in process and I'm expecting at least two more pretty soon, so, um, hopefully at the next meeting, we will have that, um, finalized building permit application updated with the, um, a sample site plan, um, at least for, um, to use in the spring forward and I think, but so far that's it, we just have one and the, um. Okay.
And then, um, any, any questions on, on that? Um, and then the next is the, um, our upcoming open commission business. And other than the listing there, is, does, uh, staff have any, um, any comments on those or just, it's just our open list at this point, we don't, we're, we'll continue with those as we're going along?
Yeah, that's just kind of our open list to make sure we're not, we're not losing track of any of our, our projects.
Okay, and then the, um, items, uh, not, not requiring action, just, uh, information, so there will be a safe streets, uh, for all joint work session with the city council held on Wednesday, April second, prior to the regular planning, um, commission meeting.
Yeah, and the consultants will present at that meeting the final Kenai Peninsula Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. Um, and so, I am, if I remember correctly, it was gonna be at five PM, trying to be moving, but I'd have to double check on the time.
So you'll, you'll just send out a meeting notice to everybody prior to?
Mm-hmm.
And, and there's, it's, it's basically taking in for, taking, it's basically getting information, it's a status report, so there's that, I mean, they, they're hit questions and whatever, but there's, uh, nothing specific for the commission to prepare for, for that, it's.
No, this is just, um, for they, for them to present the final plan and get feedback and hopefully have some public participation, so we can host a meeting in that regards, so it's open for people from the public to attend and we encourage.
Yeah, and Madam Chair, so this, uh, plan is, uh, comprehensive for the entirety of the borough, so it doesn't, uh, include the incorporated cities, um, including the city of Saldovia, I have not seen, uh, the final plan, so I'm not sure how, uh, in-depth it is regarding Saldovia, but we have had input into the plan, um, through this process and, and the hope would be, um, that if it, it addresses, um, our needs to, uh, a decent extent, that, uh, it actually could be incorporated into the comprehensive plan or as part of the comprehensive plan process, um, as another, a tool for us moving forward on what, uh, some of those safety action items are and, and that could be addressed.
And, um, and so on this, on something like this, um, if, if we're wanting, um, feedback from the public, is, is the, are the, um, consultants able to provide the information about the specific items relating to Saldovia ahead of the, uh, ahead of the meeting? Because if people want to comment on it, if it's something that's important to them, then, and they know about it, then, then at least they have a reason to come, you know, if it, if it's higher level than specific to Saldovia, may, you know, people may have, you know, whatever thoughts about that, but just so that we're giving people as the best information possible, so that if they're, if it's, you know, because if it's a known safety issue by somebody's home, then they're probably gonna be pretty interested in, in participating. So if we could, yeah, if we could, if there's a way to do that, and then, um, and then just, um, or sorry, I'm just sort of thinking through, um, are, are we able to provide that kind of information on the chatterbox or, or we have to just do it on the, at the, um?
We, yeah, we can generally do it on the city site and.
And the post office.
Magically gets shared to the chatterbox.
Yeah, I, and so, and then are, are we as individual, so are we as individuals okay to share information about that, or how, how does that, how, how does that work in this situation?
Yes, so individuals can share city information, um, from the city webpage, uh, that's, um, always, um, uh, permitted. Uh, what is, uh, a danger or something that the commission and the council, um, uh, and it's even city staff, uh, need to be aware of is specifically more for the commission and the city councils, if you start holding discussions, um, uh, on, so if you commented on a post and then Henry commented on it and then Roger commented on it, then you've had a meeting. So if you guys are all in the same, uh, public page commenting on the same city business, then you're, you're conducting a meeting, uh, in that way, so that's against Open Meetings Act. Uh, the other thing to be aware of is if you are acting as an agent of the city and you are sharing city business and your page becomes more than fifty percent city ba, business, um, then your page could be, uh, considered a, a city page. So that's why we share to the ci, our city page is because we have, um, an archive, uh, we pay an annual subscription to have all of our, um, all of our records archived off of social media and the website, um, and then that way, if there's a public records request, uh, we're able to share those. and the website, um, and then that way, if there's a public records request, uh, we're able to share those, um, those records back per the request, because that's, that's, um, an important part of the Freedom of Information Act, so.
Okay, thanks. And any comments from the public? And any comments from the Commission?
The meeting.
And, uh, our next meeting will be, um, on the 2nd of April. And then if I can have a, a motion to it, oh, sorry.
I, I didn't know if you were calling the meeting. So I know you guys have already voted, um, and approved this item. I had a question about city property. Are parking lots needed to be on the, like, do you, I don't know if it's an item that needs to be addressed, whether on, in the Commercial Business District, someone's allowed to have a parking lot on their property. You guys, as a city, do, and it's not listed. And then I also didn't know if the pavilion would be considered an accessory building. It's currently not permitted, unless there's a main building, so things to think about in the city.
Yeah, and we can address and talk about that more offline. There's, there's, there's reasonings behind things, sure, yeah. But I guess, long story short, I should say, on the record, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, um, because those are excellent questions. Uh, yeah, so parking lots are not, um, a listed use, and then there's a, a permitted use for the city to have those, um, and the pavilion is actually in our, in our right-of-way. Um, and that, nope, it's not the pavilion, it's in the right-of-way, it's a lollipop park, um, and, uh, also permitted by the city, but we can talk more about it, how that works.
So there's, there isn't any immediate need to update the, 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 um, current, um, revision of the code. Thank you. And if we, okay, so motion to adjourn, if, uh, I could get a, a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion there.
And could I have a second?
So.
And no one was needed, right? Okay, and we're, so we are adjourned, it is 6:42, or, or, or sorry, 6:34, so, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan, I hope you enjoy the rest of your, uh, your trip and travels.
All right, thank you.
Take care.